Like to have a moment of silence. We had some real problems to the, uh, north of us, and then of course in El Paso, Texas. So let's just, um, have a moment of silence for all the people that lost their lives and for all the people that went in harm's way to ensure that, uh, everything was in order after everything happened. So please, a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now business as usual. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our supervisor, Peter Hernandez.
Acknowledgement certificate of posting. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Presentations and recognitions. We have none today. Public comment. If you wish to speak on a matter which does not appear on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. Please complete a speaker card and provide it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. Except as otherwise provided by the law, no action shall be taken on any item not appearing on this agenda. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record. Please address the board as a whole through the chair. If you wish to speak on an item contained in the agenda, please complete a speaker card identifying the items and provide to the clerk of the board prior to consideration of the item. At this point in time, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Tammy Aviles.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and supervisors. I'm Tammy Aviles with the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center, and I just wanted to say thank you, um, for, um, the resolution and the passing of the feasibility study. We want to, uh, continue to work with the county and we'll be reaching out to you, um, about the feasibility study. Also just wanted to say that the library is doing very well. They've continued to add additional programs, most recently is they added another LEGO, uh, club program because it's so popular. So we want to continue, um, providing the services to all of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Susan Logue, resident of Hollister. Thank you so much for your support with the resolution. We're really thrilled to have that signed for a new, uh, community library. And, um, we look forward to working with you and with, um, Nora, the head librarian, as we figure out next steps. So we look forward to the feasibility study starting and then I'm sure we'll be, um, working with the community too as to next steps. So just wanted to thank you for that.
Uh, Richard Betancourt, forty-one, forty, South Side Road. I just want to make a comment that we just lost a, um, a real individual that really cared about our county and our city, and that was Robbie Scatini. He passed away, I believe, Sunday morning sometime. So, um, we, at least I served with him on the planning commission and I would, uh, he was a great guy, really cared about our county and our city. Thank you.
Any other speaker cards? We'll move on to, uh, department head announcements. This is information only.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we do have some announcements. We have an announcement out of our tax collector treasurer's office. I have Melinda Garcia here.
Good morning. Uh, so this is announcements out of the tax collector division. Um, we mailed out the unsecured property taxes, uh, last week. They go to primarily people that have businesses, own boats, airplanes, um, or mobile homes. They are due normally August thirty-first, however, August thirty-first happens to fall on a Saturday. That would make Monday the due day, which happens to be Labor Day. So they are actually due on, uh, September third. Um, if you have any questions or feel you received one in error, please call our office or the assessor's office as they are the, um, they have the database of the master record of all the, um, unsecured property that, that we sent out bills for. Um, and then also by the end of this month, everybody that is affected with the, uh, business license ordinance should be receiving their information and their application. And if, again, if there's any questions, please call our office so we can, um, answer any questions.
What are your hours of operation and what is the phone number to call?
Uh, we are open from eight to five, Monday through Friday. We do not close for lunch. And, um, you can reach us at area code eight three one, six three six, uh, four zero three four.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. We also have another announcement out of the administration. Uh, we have Edgar, Edgar Nolaska. He's our deputy CIO. He's going to provide an, uh, an update, um, to your board and to the public.
Hi, so this public announcement is more for the DA's office as well to make you guys aware because of the, uh, the incident that we had at Gilroy. Santa Clara County DA's office has reached out to our DA's office and we're providing mutual aid for victim services. So, um, we posted a message on our website to see if any members of the public needed help, assistance if they're indirect, direct victims of the Gilroy incident. And as part of that, there's a lot of members of the community in Santa Clara County, neighboring county that need help and we're providing mutual aid for them through our DA's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Edgar. We also have another announcement out of our clerk's office. I'd like to invite up Janet Slipsager. She's our clerk of the board.
Yes, I want to announce that we have a new assistant clerk of the board and I'd like to introduce her, Jennifer Frigent. She started, this is her second week and we welcome her aboard.
I want to thank everybody for having me and I'm very excited here to work for, um, the county of San Benito and working with all of you as a team. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that's all the announcements I have at this time, Mr. Chair. Back to you.
Thank you. Move on to, uh, board announcements. Once again, informational, information only. We'll start off with the supervisor, Dela Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I go, I have a couple of announcements. On August eighth, at ten o'clock, the city house will be having the grand opening of the new McCarthy Park. It is a park in partnership between the county and the city and to some extent, uh, school district. I'm very excited that this is moving forward. It's a perfect example of what partnerships can do in our community. As of today, it's open and kids are using it, uh, every, every hour available that they can give and, and some of those kids are actually my, my grandkids. So if you would want to find me, I'll be at the park most of the time now with my grandkids. Um, also I'd like to thank our chairman Medina for allowing us to participate in the Relay for Life this year. He organized it and it was, it was well worth it. It, it was a good cause. I have a couple of family members that passed away because of cancer, but, uh, we were there to serve as a whole community and I'm very excited that was part of this Relay for Life effort. Uh, and my final thing is that, um, last Thursday, the San Benito County Forty-Niner Group had a prayer for Gilroy and Gilroy pride. It was exciting and gave me an opportunity to, to share with the public how I felt about what happened. It's kind of funny that you never imagined happening next door to your house and, and then it happened. And that kind of makes you think about your family first and your community second and you, you know, we just got to make sure that we have the first responders in place that can help us out because if it wasn't for them, there'll be more members of the public died. Uh, and Mr. Chair, um, to recognize Robbie Scatini, I like the member, uh, um, a moment of prayer for him. I noticed that the city house yesterday also directed staff to work to build a, a park or something in his honor as he'd been very active in the community. In fact, he was very active in San Benito County, um, being, working in the sheriff's department, being the marshal, being active and being here. I was wondering, Mr. Chair, through your leadership, if we can work together with the city house to come up with an, uh, an idea, program or theme in, in honor of Robbie Scatini.
Yes, Chair, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor, Batella?
Okay. Uh, was delayed coming into town this morning, uh, coming in off of one fifty-six onto Fourth Street. And, uh, uh, what the delay was, so it's, uh, a crew fixing potholes, which was, uh, really good to see. They're doing a first-class job out there. So, uh, everybody has to be a little patient on the road, but at least the potholes are game-filled. And so very happy about that. And, uh, I want to thank the administration for moving, uh, veteran services over to the, uh, old public health building. Uh, there's been some issues with, uh, the vets building, uh, downtown and, uh, I really, uh, I've heard from the veteran service administrator there that things are going well and it's been well-received. So, uh, who knows, that might be the permanent place for it. So, but I want to thank you for moving that, uh, over. So, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, I, I wanted to reiterate what, what Supervisor Dela Cruz had mentioned. It was, it was a sad day, but it was definitely a, a very hopeful day when we came together at the Four Hundred Blocks, San Benito Street and Fourth Street to, uh, to support the Niner Empire, which is a local organization. It's, it's actually pretty encouraging to know that there's folks that, that really have a heart and they care for our community and they hosted a vigil. We, we attended. We had, uh, supervisors Gilio, Medina, uh, Dela Cruz and I were there. Supervisor Batella wasn't able to make it, but, um, but he was definitely intent on being there if, if he hadn't other prior, uh, situations with this schedule. But all in all, it was a great turnout, a lot of support and the biggest consensus as far as the conversation goes, there was a prayer done and it was all about unity. He was trying to bring together our, our local folks to come together and support our community, especially in times like this. So, uh, and then on Friday, uh, again Supervisor Medina, I, I, Chairman Medina, he, he got us together to support our Relay for Life folks and, and, and all those that have dealt with, with, uh, the disease of cancer and, and their families that have passed on and encouraging stories of folks that are fighting. So, uh, so it was really nice to see the, the county go out there and support those folks, um, and support our community really is what it came down to. And, um, I also had a, another meeting with, um, David Whiteside and, uh, Robert Peña. Basically an ex-city manager and, and a, uh, an individual who's really involved in sports. He's actually been involved with the San Francisco Giants. He's coached on all different levels and, and he's, he's, you know, been engaging with us on having this, this, this whole concept of a sports complex to San Benito County. It's really, really exciting. Uh, we also had a, a meeting with our CIO and, and Stuart on the financing side, trying to get a support mechanism, which Prop sixty-eight was the conversation. And it looks like we, we've turned in our paperwork yesterday, I believe, to, uh, to move this thing forward and hopefully acquire some funds and, and looking at doing phase one of that project, which is, you know, I know the recreational component is, is a big part of Prop, of the Prop sixty-eight expectation and, um, you know, with, with that said, you know, that's where phase one is our mindset is trying to get this thing started. Um, it's a really exciting thing. It's very new for our community. It's a hopeful opportunity for not just, uh, a place for our, our kids to play, but also revenue generation through the venture of, uh, tournament type, not just baseball, but lacrosse soccer. Really, really exciting thing. And then the last thing I wanted to commend, uh, our, our chairman Medina, uh, at, he was chair of, of our vets commission meeting and, and trying to move forward with, coming up with a different strategy to make sure that our, uh, our sports complex, I'm sorry, sports complex, our, uh, vets park is getting the support that they need because there's obviously gaps and, um, you know, with staff supporting, I think there's a good focus and I'm excited that we're going to get things done where that park is going to look a lot better and it's going to get the support that it needs. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, I always have a lot to report on and I'm going to try to keep it as brief as I can. I wanted to start out with a couple of, um, uh, somber events and then go to the positive. Robbie Scatini, uh, passing, I got to tell you, it's a, we're going to feel that in our community. The last time I remember seeing and, and, uh, talking with Robbie was right outside of the, uh, elections office. He, he really loved being involved in the, uh, the elections process and, um, you know, from being sheriff, council member, planning commission and being involved in the elections. And, and I think probably more than we all know behind the scenes in, in the city and the county, uh, is going to be, it's a great loss. So I wanted to, um, express my condolences for his family and, um, hope that, um, they find some peace moving forward. The tragedy in Gilroy, the, um, you know, obviously we have them, uh, all over the country. This one is very close and local and what I can tell you is that the, um, uh, community of Gilroy and our community have, have banded together to, um, show support and, and fight to make it through this and move, and move forward. And, uh, there's many heroes of this event as the, um, the, the time moves forward, I think we'll hear about, um, uh, different actions that were taken, heroic actions. I can tell you that our, um, sheriff's department, um, I see sitting in the background, immediately sent people over to deputies over to help. Uh, we had, um, civilian people working in the EOC, we had, um, police department folks. So just the fact that everybody's able to coalesce and, uh, help Gilroy get through this. I heard on Sunday that San Francisco Police Department was handling calls for service in Gilroy. They sent fifteen police officers down. Gilroy usually has three or four on duty, so the citizens of Gilroy got some pretty good service that, that day. So, um, all these things that are happening moving forward, it's, um, uh, some positivity out of a, uh, out of a huge tragedy and, you know, for the three, uh, victims that were killed and, uh, over a dozen victims that were injured, um, my, my, um, concerns are with them and my thoughts are with them. Moving forward to some, uh, great positivity, again Relay for Life, it was great. A hundred percent of the board was there and I was really proud of that. I, I really was to see that we all came out to support our community and the people that are suffering with, um, this evil disease. It was, it was really great to see us all out there and supporting that. Future stuff, we have, uh, tonight, National Night Out in downtown Hollister. Come on out and support your, uh, police folks. Get your kids out there. I'm sure the sheriff's department will be down there. I'm looking at Captain back there. Sorry to put you on the spot. They'll be out there, police, um, probation. Uh, everybody's out there and it's a good positive interaction to have with our law enforcement and first responder community with your kids. Get them out there, um, take back the night, so to speak. Uh, also, uh, Stuff the Bus is, um, a, uh, event that happens at Target this Thursday morning. If you want to contribute or come out and volunteer, just come out early morning on, um, Thursday. And, uh, what, what it is is, uh, kids, uh, get backpacks full of stuff that can't afford it, uh, through the Rotary Association. Uh, I see, uh, Mr. Ferrera's in the background. I'm sure he'll be down there or contributes. Amazing event. If you want to come out and feel good to give a kid a, a backpack full of supplies that they can't afford to have to go to school is pretty amazing. And, um, I encourage everybody to contribute or go out there and, and take a look at that. Uh, again, Thursday morning on that one. We had a, uh, our first citizens advisory committee for Measure G last night. Uh, I wasn't able to attend. Uh, Mr. Director Maveragenis was there. I really appreciate you being there and giving me a quick report on that this morning. I'm glad that, uh, we're, again, moving forward with Measure G, just to reassure the community that we're working on that. I see, uh, at least one Measure G oversight board member in the back, back there. Mr. Stopper, thanks for volunteering for that position and thanks for being at the meeting last night. And Mr. Chair, I have a request of the board or perhaps of staff. So when we redid John Smith Road, we learned that, uh, Best Road is pretty rough. Uh, and, um, I was wondering if we could take a look at that and have staff take a look at that and see if we would all agree to using some of the, uh, enterprise funds, uh, from the landfill to work, take a look at Best Road because now that the trucks know to go that way, I'm getting a lot of, uh, calls. And I went out there and drove it a few times and I got to tell you, Best Road is every bit as bad as, uh, John Smith and when the rains come again, it's going to get pretty rough. So if we can take a look at that and see if that makes sense to, um, get that done or, uh, I would appreciate that and that's it.
That's taking money from the enterprise zone, not from the John.
Yeah, because as you guys all know, probably better than me, before I got here, there's a, there's a healthy enterprise fund from the landfill that can only be used for impacts of the landfill. And it seems like, uh, that would be a good use to get that road, um, up to par because of a lot of the trucks go there. What happens is when the, if the trucks are coming from the Ridge Mark area, that, uh, twenty-five and, and Fairview and they're headed northbound on Fairview, they can't make the right-hand turn because of the hard turn there. So what they do is they go up to Best Road and they hang a left. And now that Best Road or, uh, John Smith was closed for a little while. It seems like anecdotally, I'm not, I can't tell you this by a fact, but they know to go that way more now, so there's more truck traffic on Best Road. Thank you.
I hate to put you on the spot because you might not know the answer. Do you know the balance on our enterprise fund?
I know it's in the millions, but I, I can't give you an exact.
Now, the enterprise zone was set up to augment any type of, uh, problems or any fixes we need that directly relate to the landfill. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, those funds are for, uh, landfill obligations. It can be for the road, uh, for that. That's what we use, uh, to address that quarter mile, half mile stretch, um, from Fairview Road, uh, down John Smith Road. So that's the fund. So that's what we could use for that. It's obviously a, yeah, we can, we can come back and do some due diligence, give you exact numbers and bring it back to you.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Well, I do have one thing to say. In today's society, whether you're at the federal, state or local level, the leadership seems to divide people rather than unite people. So just looking at something that I came up across, it's teamwork. Taking all of this into consideration, perhaps the best way to fi, to define teamwork is when a group of people work together cohesively towards a common goal, creating a positive working atmosphere and supporting each other to combine individual strengths to enhance team performance. What we have up here is five different individuals. We're not robots. We all think different. We have different ideas, different opinions, but when all is said and done, we are united up here, the five of us. So I want to make sure that we look at each one of us and there are weaknesses and strengths that we have in all of us. The idea here is to complement someone's weaknesses with someone's strengths. So I want to make sure we all understand that we are a team. There are going to be times where we don't agree, but when everything is said and done, we are united. We are out protecting and looking out for the constituents, whether it's in District one, two, three, four or five. We are the people that they expect to act professionally and to come together as a team when we have to. So with that being said, we'll go on to, uh, our consent agenda. Does anyone from the board wish to pull any item? Seeing there's none, we'll go to, uh, the public. Anyone from the public? Bring it back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
Move to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Go into, uh, public hearing. The first public hearing would be with our agriculture commissioner, speaking about mosquito and disease control assessment and adopt the resolution approving the engineer's report and ordering a levy of the F- physical year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, mosquito and disease control assessment.
Yes, on, uh, June twenty-fifth, the board adopted the, uh, resolution of intent to levy the assessment, uh, based on the engineer's report that was, uh, prepared by, uh, Kyle Tankard of SEI Consulting, who's here with me today and is available to answer any questions. Uh, we're recommending the assessment remain at eleven dollars and twenty-two cents per single family equivalent. And so today we need to receive public comment and adopt the resolution ordering the levy.
Is there any public comment? Bring it, uh, back to the board. What's the wish of the board? Any questions? Any? What's the wish of the board?
Well, we held a public hearing. Is there action required?
Yes, we need to adopt the resolution, uh, to order the levying of the assessment for twenty nineteen.
Thank you. I move we adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash seventy-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Go on to our, um, second public hearing. This comes from the county administrative office.
And I'm going to present, um...
Uh, Barbara will present this. Hold a public hearing regarding the acquisition of real property located on Buena Vista Road from Granite Rock Company in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and approved the real property purchase and sales agreement. What is the acreage on this?
Six point three acres.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So roughly sixty-one thousand dollars an acre.
The county has an opportunity to purchase the land on Buena Vista Road. It's going to be six point three acres with the lot line adjustment. There's currently no plans to develop this, um, land. It's, uh, going to be a long-term acquisition for the county, um, with, because there's no funding and no specific, uh, purpose for the land, no plot, project or plans to develop. But this could be, uh, an acquisition to hold and, um, acquire it with possibly no development or no project on this property for ten, twenty years i- into the future. Um, because any sort of project that would be, um, planned for this project would need to have a source of funding and it would also need CEQA and land use approvals. Uh, the assessor evaluated the, the, uh, price of the property and determined that it's, uh, below the, uh, the assessment of, that the assessor gave for the property. Um, so that if the county determines not to proceed with the, any sort of plans for this property, that it could, uh, sell the property in the future and still acquire, uh, back its investment price. Um, there was minor changes that were presented back from Granite Rock in association with the, uh, purchase agreement that was presented to them, but all the changes that they did present back are minor. Um, you'll note that they, um, indicated that the purchase price is four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, where in initial draft it was stated that it was three eighty-five. It's still three eighty-five, but they wanted to make sure that it was clear that the remainder of the purchase price is a donation to the county. So the price that we would actually be acquiring it for is three eighty-five in cash with the remainder as the donation to the property.
That for, uh, tax purposes? Is that the only reason?
And we indicated that they take sole responsibility for reporting that to any tax agency, so we're not, we're leaving that up to them to, to report that if they desire to take a, a tax deduction on. a, a tax deduction on that amount.
Just for the record, I want to commend Supervisor Battallo for the negotiate, negotiating from 450 down to 385.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. I wish I could have got to 300.
The other, only real other significant change on the property is that we had indicated that relocation of, an access to a well that's on the property would be a condition for closing and that they removed that as a condition of closing so that we would take that property with the well access and then it would be up to the county at some time in the future if we can't negotiate it during this escrow period to relocate that, that well access or to, to just leave it and just leave it as is. Let me see.
Can I ask you a question on that specifically?
Yes.
Are you saying that we're going to be required to, like, when you say move well access, drill a new well in the future? Because that could be very.
No, I think that we would be relocating if we wanted to, if, if there was any project in the future that they could either design around the well, access the pipe, I guess, or that they could try to.
Access to it.
Yeah, or they could try to relocate the pipe to the well along the edge of the property line.
Thank you.
Let's see. Ideally, ideally, we would, you know, there's some benefits to doing it before the close of escrow, just so you know what the, that it would be accomplished. But that's one contingency that would have to be addressed in the future. Let's see. All the other changes that they had to the agreement were very minor. It's going to be based upon a CEQA exemption because we're acquiring land that's vacant right now. We're not proposing any sort of land use developments. We're not changing the zoning or the general plan for the property. And so that's the other issue that the board would have to be aware of, that it would require land use approvals in the future, which would require CEQA, which would involve, you know, an extended, you know, CEQA review in the future. And that a future board would determine whether or not to grant any sort of general plan or zone changes or to leave it in the, in the agricultural condition. So that would be up to a future board to decide at that point in time. And then there would be a CEQA process associated with that. So right now, we're just inquiring this land to, to buy it and to hold it at the present time. And I'd open it for public comment.
The only question I have is being that we have many new board members. In our county alone, how many parcels or how many acres of vacant land do we currently own? Not including, of course, you know, the buildings that we occupy every day, just vacant land? Do you have an idea?
I have a map sitting in my office that shows the vacant land. There are some land, I know we have one in the ends of our area. We have Rosa Marada property. It's about three acres approximately, this potential piece of property, if the board decides to move forward with it. I believe that there's some in South County as well. So that's kind of what I remember off the top of my head, looking at my map daily. But I, but I can, we can come back to your board with a more detailed.
It's just for, it's just, you know, just kind of get an idea of.
Yeah.
Like inventory check, if you know what I mean, but.
Right.
At, at your leisure.
And we also have a little bit more at Flynn Road, even with the jail expansion.
I think that, that corner is, is ours as well.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, got a question.
Yes, sir.
Barbara, the writing on this contract, is it somewhere in here that says that if there were to be minerals found underneath this property? Who have rights to those minerals?
The contract doesn't address it. We're, we're buying the property in fee title. We have to examine the title report to see if there's any separated out mineral rights to the property. If there's mineral rights that don't go with the property, then they would not be transferred. If the mineral rights haven't been transferred with the property, then they would transfer to us. Like if there's no separate rights to the mineral rights.
Do you know if there's a second contract out there about mineral rights?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And one more off the top of my head is where the park, the, the master plan, we actually purchased some property. Right there, Kitty Corner to San Bonito Road, it's right on that area. So, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any other further questions from the board? What is, sorry, go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I've been working on this as you stated, Mr. Chairman, and I, I took our RMA Director out there a couple of weeks ago and took a look at that access point where that well is currently configured. It makes a lot of sense that the access be, be moved in, in the interest of the person that has the rights to that well. And it, it would be more of a straight shot going down to the bench, off the, off the, I'll call it a bench, and to the well. There was also a old house or building on there.
Yes, that's true. It's dilapidated. It's not up to code. I understand that there was some interest in moving the house, but for some, I believe that because it's not up to code, that it wouldn't be able to be moved. So that would have to be removed.
And, yeah, that's, that's one of the things that concerns me a little bit. There, there could be an expense there and whether or not we should deal with that prior to moving forward with this agreement, that, that might be something that we might have to give a little bit more thought to.
Okay. It is, and it's still, that we still have the opportunity to add conditions to the close of the agreement, the, the escrow. We can still add a condition if we want to address that, is to remove all of the house for remediation.
Yeah, I, I think we should add that condition in.
I agree. Because if you run into asbestos or, you know, some type of hazardous material in a teardown, it could be very expensive.
Yeah, that's, maybe that's what we should ask the sellers to demo that house.
Mr. Chair, we, we had that experience with old hospital. And that was a lot of money and good thing that somebody stepped out the plate and decides to take the ownership. Unfortunately, we're that, we're switching the chairs on this and I don't want to encumber potential superfund or brown, I don't know what you call it, an area in which it could potentially put a lot of money into it. I just, I don't want to prove it today. Mr. Chair, if you're asking us to prove it today, I'm not going to vote for it. I think we should go back and, and develop some type of other language so we can take away that, that limit, that liability that's, that could occur down the future. But as of today, I'm not going to support it, Barbara.
Okay. And, and we do have this in closed session so that we, the board could give direction on additional terms of the agreement and it would, it's delegated authority to the CAO to execute after the, after, after we finalize the agreement. But that's up to the board today. I do note that there's extensive investigation process during the escrow, so we'd be doing a Phase One environmental study during the escrow. And if there's anything that comes out of the Phase One environmental study, then, then we would have that. And it would still have to come back to the board to accept the grant deed and it also, and the conditions of the contract, let me go back to what section it is. It says that unless the board specifically accepts, like, all the satisfaction of the conditions of the, the purchase agreement, then it doesn't, it, the, the escrow closes. So there's some protections in it, but it's up to the board about whether you'd like to see this back at a future meeting or whether you'd like to delegate the authority. I understand.
Yeah, if I, I may, I.
You take the lead.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, Supervisor DeRico Cruz. I, I think we have to get that squared away before moving forward because that could just, I'm not worried about it being a superfund or it being a toxic area. It's, it's not that. It's just that for us to demo a building is different than Granite Rock demoing a building. There's two different prices altogether. And I, I think it's something that we should because it's an attractive nuisance. We don't need seven years to try to demo a stupid house as we have a track record of, of taking, you know, a prolonged period of time to do a task like that. And so I, I think we should square that up. And I don't know if the RMA Director has anything else that he may need to see for, for that property, but we, we should do that. But I, I think we're going, acquiring this property is an absolute benefit for the county in the fact that now we have another piece that we could do something with, whether it's workforce housing, affordable programs, transitional housing for, you know, our homeless program, or even maybe even a park out there. I, I don't know what it is in the future, but we, we won't have an opportunity like this to acquire a piece of property at this affordable price. So that's kind of my comments on it.
Mr. Chair, if you're prepared, I can make a motion. I don't know if we, do we have public comment yet on this?
We were, no, no public comment, no public comment, it's back here.
My motion would be that we table this to a date certain of September 10th, and I'm looking at staff to see if that's enough time to get an answer on the, the home, the house.
Yes, I would ask that you continue the public hearing to September 10th at 9:00 AM. That way we don't have to renotice it since it had to be published three times.
Okay. Is, I'll move that we continue the public hearing until September 10th on this item.
At 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Go to our last public comment, or public comment, I'm sorry, public hearing. Resource Management Agency, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution imposing a fee tax assessments in physical year 2019, 2020 for utilities and services provided to the county service areas and adopt resolutions authorizing the county auditor to levy a special tax and establish the 2019, 2020 tax within the community facilities district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a report in front of you. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. And I understand there's some people from the CSAs also out here. We've been working very closely with the CSAs. You'll hear a report later on, on the update, but at this point in time, if you have any questions, we're ready to answer.
Let's open this up to public comment first. How many speakers do we have, ma'am? No speakers?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Bring it back to the board.
Yeah, so today is, is, is a key, we, we got to think of what we're doing today is, this is a standard process. We have to do an annual update of our 218 process if there's going to be an escalator. And some of the CSAs have a built-in escalator. Some of them are maxed out in their escalators. So a lot of the CSAs, there will be no increase and I think that's important to mention. One of the things that came out of this item through, because the budgets are attached, I just wanted to put it on the record and we also corresponded with CSA 46. If you take a look at page 29 of the fee report, CSA fee report, it's page 270 in your agenda, there's an item that says other consultants, and this is specifically related to CSA 46 Quail Hollow, says 30,500. Just to be clear, after working with staff over, over the last couple of days, that includes $3,500 for a street sweeping, about $1,000 for contingencies, and any balance of that after we worked on this now will be applied to a retaining wall that has failed in the community. And I just wanted to have that on record for them.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, what's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move, I'm just trying to get the language right here. I lost it. I apologize. Give me one second. I move we adopt Resolution 2019-74 and 2019-75 and 2019-76.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, what's, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you. This concludes a public hearing. We'll go on to our regular agenda. Number 12. This also comes from the County Administration Office. Receive a presentation on the county, the county service areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll go ahead and open this up. I'd like to invite Lauren Hall up, this is her, I think, first official full presentation. So we're looking forward to that. But I, I'd asked her to put this report together because, you know, CSA has been kind of a thorn in our, in our hill for the last few years and she's done a fantastic job coming on board and just kind of trying to get the lay of the land with CSAs, really understand, you know, where we stand with the CSAs. And I wanted to provide your board an update of what work she's done as well as staff, internal staff. We've had Stewart, myself, Edgar, Dulce administratively for probably six months to a year, I think, really kind of working hard on this, trying to understand the budget and getting a better handle. I think that there's a lot of great things that have been done. I wanted to make sure that your board was aware of it. Also, there's still a road to make it better. There's still a lot more work to do, to do. And, but I, I felt it was appropriate to at least give your board an update. So I'd like to, here's Lauren.
Before your presentation here, I don't want to steal your thunder, but when I joined the board a little bit over two and a half years ago, the CSAs were in disarray. We've had problems that I hear for decades. And I think within the last couple of years, we've been able to really move it to a better direction. And, you know, thanks to all the board members sitting up here. And of course, the staff that really did all the work to make sure that we took care of our, our customers. They are our customers and, you know, we treat them with the best customer service possible and this is a result. So thank you.
Thank you. So, good morning, everyone. Good morning, board members of the public. Like everyone said, I'm going to be giving just a quick update on CSAs, county service areas. So our county currently has 32 active CSAs. A variety of services are provided to each one that differ to each one. Some of those services are provided through county staff and then others are provided through contractors. So this presentation is just going to summarize some of the recent accomplishments and developments in the administration of CSAs and then provide just a quick overview of some of the upcoming projects that we have planned for the CSAs. So as you know, you just adopted the 2019, 2020 fee report. So that has been completed. The budgets for the CSAs, the recommended budgets are available on OpenGov. That's accessible at this link and it's also on the county homepage, COSB.us, under the Quicklink section. So that tool allows the public to kind of compare the budgets from previous, the past five years. It provides a tool to kind of dial down into the individual CSAs. These graphs are examples of what you can do using the tool, different visualization, different ways to view the data and things like that. So we are also working on linking data from our system so that it updates in OpenGov on a more frequent basis. So that is something that we're going to be working on. Regarding the provision of services in general, at the June 11th meeting, the board adopted a resolution memorializing the county's policy on providing services. We also adopted a license agreement for a CSA at that same meeting. So we're really working to try to just make the process clearer and more understandable for everyone. We've been working on lists of weekly, monthly, and yearly actionable items to make sure that the provision of services remains smooth. And related to that, we've been working on making sure that those services are provided in a smooth manner, even in periods of transition. So that has included creating a central database with the formation documents, the board formation documents, and the LAFCO formation documents for each CSA, current contracts for each CSA, contact information, and all the background information we need for each CSA so that we can provide the services. Moving on to some specific CSAs, at CSA 31, we have established a cross connection control survey. That survey was completed in May to identify backflow prevention devices in their water system that needed to be repaired or replaced. Along with that, we completed a cross connection control program to ensure that procedures are in place to maintain those backflow prevention devices, to make sure that they're being tested on a consistent basis and to make sure that they're being repaired or replaced when they need to be. As a result of that process, a report was completed in July that identified which of those backflow prevention devices needed to be repaired or replaced. And there's currently. And there's currently about 70 that need to be replaced, so staff is working on those replacements. It should take an estimated six to nine weeks to complete all of those replacements. We need to upgrade the type of device, that was one of the findings of the report, so that's what we will be working on. Additionally, the well at CSA 31 has been producing very low levels of water. So to determine the problem, a video survey was completed. That survey found that the perforations in the well casing were plugged. So to rectify that, the casing was cleaned and swabbed on July 8th through 12th, that work was completed, to remove the mineral buildup that was plugging it. It was also airlifted to remove any debris from the bottom of the well. And initial tests have indicated that that was successful in increasing the amount of water produced, but we won't know for sure until the well is operating at full capacity. At CSA 35, we had some concerns about the weed abatement that we have been addressing. Their detention pond was also mowed by the county crew, and it is scheduled to be ripped later in the year. At CSA 50, which is Dunville, we have authorized the replacement of a defective backwash valve. That should be completed by the end of the month. We've also been working on getting quotes to repaint the pump house and to put some new gravel in before winter. At CSA 46 and 47, which is Quail Hollow and Oak Creek, we have been working on some irrigation system issues. We've had some leaks that were affecting residents, which we have addressed. We've, repairs have been made on those. There's some replacements of some of the system that needs to occur to make sure that the leaks don't continue, but they have been repaired right now. We're just working on the replacements as a more long-term fix. And we're working out some irrigation issues still with CSA 46 and 47. Current CSA road maintenance projects, we have CSA 5, 8, 9, 11, and 35. The field reviews have been completed for these, and the pre-construction meetings have been completed. We're just waiting for some contract change orders to be finalized, and then the contractor can mobilize, and that work can start on these five. So moving on to some upcoming items and projects, we have a comprehensive municipal service review. An initial review of the LAFCO and board resolutions of formation for each CSA has revealed that some of the services authorized in the original resolution are different from what's currently needed by the CSA, or what is currently being provided to the CSA. So an MSR needs to be completed to bring the services that are needed into alignment with the services that are authorized in the resolution. So staff will be working with LAFCO, the local agency formation commission, on that. We're researching the process for doing an MSR to bring all of those into alignment. Additionally, we have these 15 CSAs that are going to be receiving road maintenance. Those are in the works. Field, initial estimates have been completed, but we need to work out some logistics, and then they will be brought to the board at a later time to move forward with these 15. And then lastly, we have some annexations that are coming up in CSA 24, Santa Ana Acres. The board authorized the initiation of proceedings to annex the New Wynn subdivision into CSA 24 at the March 5th meeting. That then went to LAFCO, and that was approved at the May 9th meeting. So we're waiting for some last administrative steps to be completed, and then that annexation will be finalized. The board also authorized the initiation of proceedings to annex the Meadow at Gardenia Lane, also known as the Clower subdivision, into CSA 24. That was at the April 16th meeting. That now needs to go to LAFCO. It will likely be on their August agenda for them to finalize that. And then lastly, at CSA 25, Vineyard Estates, that's an inactive CSA right now, and we've been working on providing estimates to the CSA regarding what it would look like to reactivate it, what those fees would look like. And we've also, the Resource Management Agency has provided an estimate of a slurry or chip seal for their roads. So that is it for now. We're working to continue to increase communication with the CSAs, to ensure timely provision of services. We've received some positive feedback so far, but we're definitely continuing to work to address concerns, especially in regards to landscape maintenance and water services. So, are there any questions?
I wanted to, Mr. Chair, if I may, I wanted to thank you, Lauren, for all your hard work, and Ray, and Edgar, Barbara, everybody that's been working on this since I've been here in the last six months or so. I could tell you that the chair said it, and I'll repeat it one more time. We serve the community in general, and we serve the CSAs, and we are here to provide customer service. And I know, I heard our new director, Maverick Dennis, actually state that to a CSA representative the other day, and I was really happy to hear that. And that's what we're here for, is the customer service. They're paying for a service that we're providing, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Let's open it to public comment, and we'll come back to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Ferrera?
Very optimistic and very pleased to date on working with the new RMA director and staff on, we're going ahead. One issue though, just to follow up, that was Lauren's report, is on the weed abatement with 35, she highlighted there, you contracted out to, contracted to do part of, the first phase they did at our property was unacceptable. They did not do it to, I've addressed it with, and this is prior to Harry coming onboard, I've addressed it with him. I know you guys are backed, you're backed up. Weeds aren't going to be growing now till it starts raining again, but I want to make it apparent that we're unsatisfied to date on that part. There is other parts of the weed abatement that hasn't been addressed at all. I had addressed it with DeRosa, your thing. His comments were unacceptable. I've told that to Harry, I think he will address it, but I just want to make it known to the board that as far as the weed abatement done, it is incomplete, and hasn't been done up to past standards at CSA 35. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing there's no other speaker cards, bring it back to the board. Mr. Bertello?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Ferrero for coming forward, and yes, weed abatement, you know, it's, it is still a problem and a work in progress, even on our, on our public county roads. And, you know, I've had a chance to talk to the RMA director about, you know, how we're going to kind of remedy that. It's a, just take a little bit of time. And, you know, I hope that everybody, all the CSAs see that we're absolutely committed to improving services and relations and accountability, and we're making very, very positive steps. And Lauren, I am so happy with the report today and your efforts, and it is, takes some, you know, time to get, you know, the right coordination in the field between our staff that's in the field, that's working very, very hard and trying, and what we should be contracting some services out for. And, but we're, work diligently. It does help to hear the criticism, so we know what's wrong out there. And, but, and then we're trying to correct it. So I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the staff's effort to date. It's the best position we've been in since I've been on the board with the CSAs. It's been very much of a struggle, and we still have a little work to do, but we're going in a positive direction. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, comments?
Just briefly on Vineyard Estates for our team, I'd like to get together maybe in the next week or so, and just get an update and see where we're at. I know we're working, I don't need to go over all the issues, we're working on a bunch of issues out there. And one of our Vineyard Estates members is here today, so just to see where we're at, and see where we're at in responding to the questions that we had at our last meeting. Thank you.
This is a presentation only, so no action is needed?
That's correct. I just wanted to add one more thing, that, you know, Jessica will be coming back full time as a CSA coordinator in September, it's the plan, so we'll be doing a handoff. I know I've talked to Harry about adding potentially another person in there to augment when there's someone that's absent, so we want to shore up that office a little bit more, just because there's so many items, and as you saw today, that there's a lot of things going on in each of the CSAs. But again, I want to thank Lauren, she's just been amazing, along with staff, the support staff as well. Been doing a lot, a lot of meetings, hundreds of hours, I can, I can tell you, trying to dial in the CSA, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, just in that, Jessica, Jessica comes back in September?
That's correct, that's the plan.
Looking forward to having her back, but, you know, we can't lose momentum. We have to continue down the path that we are at this point in time. There cannot be any loss of momentum, and I know Jessica will stand up to the challenge, and there'll be no problems, but I just wanted to relay that message to you, Mr. Harry.
Yeah, and we've been, we've been working already as, with the transitional plan, and to make sure that he does have the staffing, and we're not going to leave him hanging either. Lauren will still be on call, Stuart, myself, Dulce, Edgar, we'll all be present and still working together, make sure that that transition happens smoothly.
Perfect, thank you.
We feel confident, yep.
That concludes our open session. We'll go off into a closed session. Barbara, can you let everyone know what's going on in closed session, please?
13, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivisions D2 and E2 of Government Code Section 54956.9. Number of cases, one, facts and circumstances, justifying closed session, potential litigation related to current landfill agreement. 14, closed session, conference with, regarding, with real property negotiators, Section 54956.8. Property, street address, APN 0590200030. Agency negotiators, Ray Espinoza and Barbara Thompson, negotiating parties, San Benito High School District, John Tenenbaum, under negotiation as lease terms. 15, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to subdivisions D2 and E2 of Government Code Section 54956.9. Number of cases, one, facts and circumstances, justifying closed session, potential additional litigation regarding the master tax agreement currently being litigated in Award Homes and BMC Promise Way. 16, closed session, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, subdivisions A and D1 of 54956.9. Name of cases, Rose versus County of San Benito, Superior Court of California, case number CU 17-00151, and that's pending in the County of San Benito Superior Court. 17, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Section 54956.9. Number of cases, one, authorized pursuant to 54956.9, D2 and E1. And 18, closed session, conference with real property negotiators, under 54956.8, Buena Vista Road, APN 19230002, on Buena Vista, the property was on the open session agenda, it's on Buena Vista Road, across the road from Buena Vista, where it makes that 90-degree turn to the north. Agency negotiators are Ray Espinoza and Barbara Thompson, negotiating properties, parties are Granite Rock, and under negotiation is the price in terms of payment.
Is there any public comment? See none, we'll head to closed session, and everyone have a good day.